Commission to order. Ms. Chiketti, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Leflem?
Here.
Ms. Shenfield?
Here.
Ms. Gold?
Present.
Mr. McPartland?
Here.
Mr. Darpino?
Here.
Mr. Oster?
Here.
Chairman Walsh?
Here. Okay, we have the approval of the minutes from the August 12, 2019 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Gold and seconded by Mr. Darpino. I do have one comment on page three, line 105. The resolution was, oh, maybe I'm screwed up here. We tape, okay, now it's, it looks like that's my fault.
I was gonna propose that we change the, it to seven.
Yeah, that's, that's what.
Oh, that's right.
It's actually five to one. Yeah, that's my notes.
Did you not have a full?
No, we didn't have a full board.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and if you count one, two, three, there's only six names there.
Oh, okay.
And I knew I had something I couldn't, I looked, it said it was tabled five to one, and that's right, it was.
Mr. Leflem, were you absent?
I was.
Oh, okay.
Yep, yep. So you caught that also. All right, that was the only modification I had. Does anybody else have any corrections or modifications?
I do. On line 97, page three, it just looks like a typographical error. Mr. Latif, it should be Mr. Khan, I believe.
Anybody else? Okay, can I have a motion to put the amended minutes on the floor, on table for approval? So moved by Mr. McPartland. Seconded, did you second that? Ms. Shenfield, okay, so we have amended minutes with those two changes. Any other corrections or comments? If not, anybody, all in favor of the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? The minutes are, of the eight twelve meeting are approved. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the agenda. Public hearing tonight. For the public hearing for 1448 Balltown Road, application for a special use permit and site plan approval for the Ace Hardware Store. The applicant has told us again tonight that they would not be able to make it. They asked us to, to hold off, and so we respect them, and I appreciate the public coming out tonight. I'm sorry for any problems this may cause anybody, but we're going to continue with the public hearing and keep the public hearing open. So we will hear comments tonight, if anybody has any public comments. We did read the notice at the last meeting. So any public comments for 1448 Balltown for the application for a special use permit for the Ace Hardware Store? You're welcome to come to the microphones, we'll listen to what you have to say, and we will continue next time, the next meeting on September 9th, by the way.
I would appreciate it if you would read the public hearing on exactly what they're looking for. You're talking special use from it, and what is the other, and a site plan approval. So is that spelled out in your public hearing document?
I'm just looking at it right now.
Always.
All I know is what I've read in the paper.
Site plan, yeah, site plan review and special use permit for 1448 Balltown relative to the following: location and operation of Ace Hardware Store at 1448 Balltown Road. So that was read at the, the meeting last time, and we'll continue to hold that open until the applicant shows. We fully expect them on the 9th of September, and at that time, we'll ask the applicant to also give us a presentation, give us an update where they stand, presentation of what they've been working on, and we'll have comments from the public, and hopefully we'll be able to close the public hearing at that point in time and continue forward with the process.
Thank you. I don't understand a word you're saying. I think. I'm very disappointed that Ace Hardware doesn't think we're important enough to show up. This is the second time, and I really think they should be put on notice. You know, we are an out-of-board to be played with. One of the things that I'm bringing up tonight, which is unlike my last appearance, is the vacancies that are occurring in the town of Niskuna in the commercial area. Now, as you know, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond has left Mohawk Mall. It is a sizable location. It would be fine for a hardware store. It wouldn't need any of the necessary permits and site plans and what have you. And I do think that in some cases, even though we perhaps should not suggest other places, I think it behooves us as a town to try to balance our town between the commercial and the other parts of town. The other thing that sort of bothers me is there's a hardware store that has gone out on Union Street. Granted, it is Schenectady, it's right over the line. Another hardware store has gone out on, no, I think State Street, I think it's part of the Woodlawn Group. Now, those are two mom-and-pop stores. They're not going to be this great big, I can't even think of the, Ace. The other thing that bothers me is with the entry off Balltown Road, which is not spelled out here. I don't know whether people realize that that's what they're looking for. Is that what they're looking for?
They're looking at a variety of different things as part of the process, and so.
Okay, certainly, we don't want to misinterpret. What about delivery trucks? You know, if you're going to allow access off Balltown Road, you're going to have huge problems on Balltown Road unless you know something you're not telling us about widening Balltown Road. And I doubt if that's happening. It hasn't happened since I've been born. Anyway, so those are, to me, very important questions as to the development of a hardware store. Now, granted, it was a gym, it was a gym when I moved here, and had lots of problems, lots of, and it sold, and it sold to the brokerage firm, which was very good. They had a lot of troubles there, had a lot of troubles with water, couldn't wait to build their own place, and they did. I think that is not the location. I, I opposed it in my first appearance in the public hearing, and I don't, I, I'm astonished that no one is here. I live on Brookshire Drive. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't give my address. I live on Brookshire Drive. I'm on Balltown Road all the time, day and before 10 o'clock at night when it's dark. And the traffic is amazing. Two-way traffic coming down from probably 146 and the Clifton Park area, and coming up from the four o'clock traffic of job creations and things like that. Lot of traffic, and it's a two-lane road. This, for some reason or other, does not appear to be the location. I don't know, and obviously, they don't meet the criteria if you have to grant them special use permits and site plan approval. This is within your province. You're the ones that can say, no, no, no. We, we're going to create vacancies because we just don't honor our commitments to the way we've established our commercial areas. And those are those two shopping centers at the end of, at the end of Balltown Road. I hope you give us some very serious consideration. I know I threatened to put a "for sale" sign up, and I'm toying with that idea, because I really, I don't think we're paying attention to this is a small residential town. And I think the Ace Hardware up at, well, I think Bellevue Builders is an Ace Hardware, and I think there's one up in Bolston Spa. So it isn't that we're bereft of hardware stores. And I think that creates a problem, too, business-wise. Can't think of anything else, but if our dear applicants decide to show up, I'd like to be here and scold them for taking up our time. Obviously, they're not quite sure of their plans. Thank you very much. I'm going to come speak at the public hearing, so I'll sit down and come back up again. Thank you.
No, thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard regarding 1448 Balltown Road, Ace Hardware, special use permit application, public hearing? Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll take a pause on the public hearing, we'll leave it open, and we'll continue at our September 9th meeting. We expect the applicant to be here, and there's some good questions we just heard, and those are the kinds of things that we'll hopefully have the applicant brief us to prior to the public hearing portion at the next meeting. Okay? Thank you.
I'm sorry. A special use permit is not a use variance, it's not a variance of any kind of the zoning. A special use permit is just an extra level of scrutiny on, of use that is allowed. So they're not asking for any relief from the zoning. There's no variance that are required for the site plan. Site plan special use permit is just an extra level overview that goes to the town board and then comes back to the planning board, just for the record.
Is this one that has to be renewed every year if it's still the same?
No, not at all, nope.
It's not a renewable?
No, yeah, it just goes with the use.
Okay, thank you. Privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in a town in Niskuna? Please come to the microphones, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Lorraine Saban, 2455 Brookshire Drive. I'd like to compliment the board and the planning department for putting out an advertisement for our deputy planner. I want to tell you, he was a remarkable employee. And I'm not easy to deal with, because I'm more questions than anything else, but he was wonderful. You could call him up, he was right on target. He's going to be hard to replace, of course. But I had to bring up the difference between the board doing what I think is proper in the town and the Board of Assessment and Review, which, there was never an advertisement, there was never any qualifications, there was never anything, and I don't even know the man. It's simply a question of protocol, and I want to thank the board. I'm sure you had a lot to do with not only hiring Jeff in the first place, but now you have the tough decision to replace him. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Greta Merrill, 2148 Marawav, Niskuna. I'm a Girl Scout in Cadet Troop 2351, and I'm working towards the Silver Award. The goal of my project is to improve pedestrian safety in Niskuna and have crosswalks installed to public service facilities, specifically between the town hall and the public library. I chose this project because I love to visit the library, and since I live on the south side of town hall, I have to cross not street east to get there. Not having a crosswalk there makes it difficult and potentially unsafe for me and members of this community. I researched about different crosswalk conditions in Niskuna and learned about the 2016 Complete Streets Committee recommendation that a crosswalk be installed heading towards the library. Since no crosswalk had been put in, in the spring of 2018, I created a petition, received 120 signatures in support of the project during the 2018 Niskuna Day. I then attended a public safety committee meeting in June 2018 where I handed in the petition. Unfortunately, I became busy and the project took a backseat to my schoolwork, and I did not follow up. I resumed the project in the spring of 2019 with Supervisor Said as my project advisor. I began to research laws pertaining to crosswalks in our town code and discovered there were only two references in the entire town code, neither of which involved where crosswalks should be located. I learned that in section 220-48.1, it states the purpose of the Town Center Overly District is to develop an identifiable center of the town Niskuna with the town hall and the Niskuna Branch Library as its nucleus. This is hard to accomplish when you can't really access both connected together. The code addresses sidewalks, and I realized, the code addresses sidewalks, however, there are no laws specifically geared towards the maintenance of crosswalks. While creating pedestrian environment is mentioned in our town code frequently, there are no sections requiring where crosswalks should be placed. To make this proposal manageable for the town, I focused on access to the town hall, the library, and the post office. I researched how to propose a resolution in order to amend the town code, as well as the zoning code for sections that include the library. I looked at the other resolutions that were passed, such as a resolution implicating the complete street policy. My draft resolution uses language already existing in the town code. To amend the zoning code, our town code says proposals have to come through the planning board, which is why I'm here tonight. I'd like to propose amendments to section 220.4 of the town code, definitions, as well as section 220-48.5 requiring crosswalks to public service facilities, such as the library's post office and town hall. I would also like to amend section 185 general legislation to include laws for the maintenance of crosswalks. Improving the town code in this way would allow Niskuna to be more pedestrian-friendly and improve the pedestrian experience in Niskuna. It would also allow the library to be more accessible by people that live on the south side of town hall, and encourage people from old Niskuna to walk to the library. I've met with Ms. Said and Ms. Kim, and they have both emailed copies of the draft resolution. I have a copy to submit tonight, appreciate consideration. I know I need like a public hearing.
Oh, I appreciate, yeah, thank you for your comments. If you have a copy, you can give it to Ms. Chiketti, and we'll make sure we get it out to everybody, and it'll be part of the public record for tonight's meeting. So you can just give it to Linda over here. And I said, we're at the, we already met at the Safety Committee, I guess that'd be something we could always talk about, our Economic Development, Historic Preservation and Planning Committee meeting also.
Yes, I'd say Greta also attended the planning board meeting, the last planning board meeting. She attended the town board agenda meeting, and she's been diligently following up with Supervisor Said and myself. I spoke with the superintendent of highways, Ray Smith, and he thinks that maybe, I'm waiting to hear from him on whether or not we can push forward with this crosswalk for enacting the legislation. This is something we have to discuss, but yes, I explained to her the public hearing process, and she's been diligently researching this issue for now, over a year, so.
Right, so it would have to come through our, our planning committee, right, Economic Development, before, so.
Yeah, amendments to the zoning code, actually, like, we, we have a couple of them sort of on our backburner, but they, they trigger the seeker. So it goes to CAC, it goes to us, then we refer them to the town board. We hold a public hearing, town board holds a public hearing, and then they introduce the local law.
Okay. All right, so it's something we could put on the agenda then at that meeting, right?
Definitely.
Okay. And that'll at least, you know, keep it moving forward, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it, your hard work. Thanks. Anybody else for privilege of the floor? No? Okay, seeing no one else for privilege of the floor, we're closed, privilege of the floor. We have no unfinished business tonight. Do have a couple items under new business. First up being a resolution 2019-25, a resolution for site plan approval of a Target Beacon at 428 Balltown Road. And since this is the last time we, we pulled the resolution, and it was, it has been modified, I'm going to ask Linda to read the resolution, and Laura is going to try to get the applicant on speakerphone.
One of the purposes of the meeting was to take action on the final site plan approval. Whereas Matthew Flansburgh, representing Target Corporation, has made an application to the planning board for site plan review for a Target Beacon in the parking lot of 428 Balltown Road, Niskuna. And whereas the site plan is shown on Page 2 map entitled "Target Store T1521 Drive-Up Concept Plan, 428 Balltown Roads Connected in New York 12304, prepared by Kim Lee Horn on July 22, 2019." And whereas the zoning classification of the property is Shopping Center Commercial Zoning District, and whereas section 220-48.4 states that direction signs shall conform to 220-22 and shall be the size not to exceed three square feet and not to exceed four feet in height above the existing grade of the street. And whereas the proposed beacon sign is 13 feet 9 inches tall and 1.5 foot by 1.5 foot wide, and therefore requires a waiver. And whereas the section 220-48-20.21B of the code allows the Planning Board and Zoning Commission to waive one or more of the standards set forth in Article 8E Design Guidelines and Standards for Shopping Center Commercial Zoning District. And whereas this board has carefully reviewed the proposal and by this resolution does set forth its decision hereon. Now, therefore be it hereby resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission has determined that the proposed waiver to allow a Target Beacon has a minimum negative effect on aesthetics and compatibility with the surrounding Shopping Center Commercial Zoning District for the following reasons. The proposed location is over 800 feet away from the publicly maintained right-of-way. The nearest adjacent residence that faces the parking lot is over 900 feet away. The sign will be turned off at night when Target is closed. The topography of the location is sloped towards the building and therefore naturally mitigates some of the vision height of the sign. And be it furthermore resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission therefore grant the waiver for said proposed site plan review and hereby grant final site plan approval.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Darpino, do I have a motion and resolution?
Aye, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Darpino, moving the resolution for adoption. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Leflem, and we have the applicant. How do we do?
Can you guys hear us?
Yes.
Okay, great, yeah, we can hear you, and just see if there's any questions during discussion. Is there any discussion, David?
So the past, since the past meeting, myself and Ms. Shenfield visited a couple Targets. We field measured the beacons that were there. They are the sizes that are shown on the drawings. We also took photographs. There are some additional signs, the ones in Latham and Queensberry that are adjacent to it, which are standard signs that are on movable bollards. The beacons are very visible from any point in the parking lot, they're definitely higher. The secondary signs that are next to them are not as visible, they're about the size of a standard handicap parking space sign, about eight foot two in height, but they are shorter than the signs that are on the carts that you could put your shopping cart into. So they have semicircular signs. Target also has a whole bunch of different signs, like security cameras that are posted to light poles, things like that. So that's what we found in the field. Daisy wanted to elaborate a little bit more.
And then, so as everybody got the email that I sent this afternoon, that I did my own just test, I downloaded the app for the Target pickup, and I wanted to see how it was functioning in the Niskuna location currently. So I did it for the first time, I had never done the app for, you know, done a pickup like that. So I did it, programmed it, and then it gave me the step-by-step steps to do it, to do the pickup right at the Niskuna location. So I wanted to confirm, they are in fact doing the pickup without the, the tall signs. They only have the, the standard signs that Mr. Darpino referenced. And as a picture show, I also found that in addition to directions that they gave me on the app, they told me exactly where I was going in the front of the store, and then, basically what signs to look for. And so I didn't, I found with my personal experience, I didn't have any issues finding it without the, the tall 13-foot signage there. I found it, and the, the lanes were properly marked, so I saw that there was four lanes or four parking spaces, you know, with, with markings to depict where I should pick up, you know, my order, and, you know, and it was seamless, you know, but it was just that I, you know, then I hit a button when I got there, somebody came out, they gave me my order, and, and that was it. You know, she found me easily. I was, you know, in one of the four designated spots that the app had told me to go to.
Okay, thanks.
Can I ask, what was the, there seemed to be, at least when I looked at perused the minutes last, there seemed to be some objection which caused it to be delayed.
Well, I'll speak for myself. I think that the, some of the concerns, one was it was the first time we saw it, so whether or not, you know, what a compliant sign would look like, and so that we could minimize the request for a waiver.
Okay.
So that was primarily the concern, and, yeah, I think the other concern is setting precedents, you know, because there's other places that, you know, business models might be going that way, so we want to make sure that it's truly needed and have minimal impact, and I think that's covered in the, of the resolution tonight, the points that are taken about, you know, 800 feet away, not near a residence, and especially at least for this location in Niskuna. So that was information that we were just discussing, but we really didn't have, and so now we have that for the resolution tonight.
Yeah, we definitely wanted to see the alternatives, because I had seen them, but the board didn't have them.
Yep. I did get an opportunity to go to Latham and Clifton Park, as I mentioned earlier, and I, you know, I don't have a problem with the sign, but it is something we have to be careful of, depending on the location of the business, if, you know, if this becomes a business model for everybody, you know.
And the applicants really didn't present a justification for it. That was one of my concerns, because clearly, if we allow here, we're probably going to get more applications in the future, and it's really not our job to make the case for allowing it. It's up to the applicant to do that.
Yeah. So we have, you know, obviously received additional information from the applicant for this meeting also.
The flip side I could see, though, too, is that if you don't have the signs, people might just literally drive up to the, to the crosswalk and then double park in front of, and block the crosswalk. They don't have some type of identifiable way in which to park and where they, where they see it.
And they currently do have, they do have signs there that do designate where you're supposed to park. So that, I guess that was my concern as well, is to have something there. But then the Niskuna location does currently have signs that depicts that this is separate, that handicap parking, this is separate than, you know, parking with a child, this was only for pickup.
But, no, this is, when you tested this, the signs that you're referring to, are they painted on the ground?
They're both. They have the lines painted, but then there's an actual.
Also, a sign that comes up. The beacon's a little higher, but the beacon would be higher.
The beacon would be significantly higher.
Has there been any issue with any of the other locations with the solar signal about being connected or maintenance of the, of the solar panel at all?
That's a question for you, Tim.
The locator, Target tested for the Wi-Fi before they selected the location so that they were good in that aspect. And in terms of the solar panel, the solar panel really just provides energy to, or power to the beacon. The location is specifically so that, number one, Wi-Fi is, they can, the employees can connect to Wi-Fi to that location, and also, of course, to be near the front, to be consistent with, you know, the nationwide stores, and also for employee safety.
Right, but I mean, no, no issue, like, if it accidentally gets tapped by somebody, it might fall and someone's ca, I mean, just, it just in terms of, like, there've been no issues with the other, with the other solar panels at the other, at the, any of the other locations, in terms of maintenance?
Safety and maintenance, yeah.
I personally have not heard of an issue like that happening before. I mean, it, I think I mentioned this during the last meeting, the, the bottom, the concrete footing is similar to, you know, like, any light pole, whereas somewhere to run into it, I don't think the light pole would fall on that, versus, it's, it would be a similar type thing with beacon.
Okay. Yeah, it seems pretty robust. Any other questions for the applicant that's on the phone, or comments at all?
I have a question for Ms. Shenfield. Daisy, when you drove up and had the store representative bring you the item, did you, did you happen to see the path they took from the store?
Yeah, they, they basically did, I mean, which, they, they just cut across. I mean, there was definitely not, there didn't seem to be any sort of specific path that she was following or anything. So I guess my question would be for the applicant is what the solar, you know, beacon, what that would designate, would there be an additional crosswalk or additional pathway for the employee?
Typically, that's something we can't really prevent. If an employee or if a customer wants to walk on the street versus a crosswalk, we can't prevent that from happening. We, we can only propose a suggested route or an assumed route that an employee should or would take. That would be typically on a crosswalk, and then they would walk, you know, near the parking stalls just to avoid traffic.
Yeah, I mean, for the public, I can understand, but for an employee, it'd be part of training and holding the employee responsible for doing as trained, so, you know, obviously, you don't want anybody to get hurt, and that's the.
Right, she could have come down the sidewalk along the side of the Target building, all the way down, and then just cut right over. I mean, I think she just chose, whatever her method was going to be, because it was just kind of diagonal.
Okay. Any other questions? No? No? Just please call the roll, Ms. Chiketti?
Ms., Mr. Oster?
Aye.
Mr. Leflem?
Aye.
Mr. McPartland?
Aye.
Mr. Darpino?
Aye.
Ms. Shenfield?
Nay.
Ms. Gold?
Nay.
Chairman Walsh?
Aye. The resolution is approved, one, two, three, four, by a vote of five to two. Okay? So waiver's granted, and they can go forward now, right, Laura, and get a building permit? Is that?
Yep.
And move forward.
So if you guys just want to reach out to us tomorrow during normal business hours? Okay.
All right, thank you for calling in.
Thanks for letting us call in.
No problem.
Get the building permit, you're gonna have to drive up, though. No.
Oh, no.
Just kidding.
Well, the big pole outside.
Forget it, there'll be a spot that says building permits with a, with the solar thing on it, you'll see it.
Have a good night, guys.
No joke, yeah. All right, thanks. All right, enough fun, right? New business, a second resolution for tonight, is resolution 2019-26, a resolution for site plan amendment to 2340 Nut Street. I know that's a I know that's a long one, but did it change quite a bit, Laura, in the resolution?
Uh, nope. But I did change the, whereas, there's some changes.
What do you think?
To you guys. I can, I can go through the changes if you want.
Yeah, we could do that, if you save Linda from reading the whole thing. We've read it before, because this has been approved. It's basically an update to the resolution based on the open item for the architectural approval.
Yep. So, Planning Board Resolution 2019-16 was approved with condition number nine, required a site plan amendment to be submitted addressing the final facade and landscaping of the property. So, the resolution referenced the site plan amendments, and then we've got the layout, lighting, and landscaping apartment, Knott's Landing West Plan by ABD engineers. And then, we also referenced elevation and decorative railing detail prepared by Harris A. Sanders Architects, PC, on June 27, 2019. The zoning stays the same. Then, we kept all the conditions from original, the 2019-16 there, except we did remove condition number nine, because this is the site plan amendment that was referenced. But we retained the notes about wetlands, about site disturbance, about pre-construction meetings, still have a parkland fee. We're still, the applicant in here, he does find, he did write out responses to the engineering department's comments, but we still have to get a final letter of approval. So, all the engineering comments remained in the resolution. Stormwater control facility maintenance agreement and access easement, that's something that we need for all our site plan approvals. And then, we still have the easement for the future multi-use path that was recommended and asked for by the Complete Streets Committee that you guys supported.
Okay. So, basically, we have a resolution for...
Site plan amendment.
Yep, site plan amendment for 2340 Nut Street, basically, condition number nine, which is an open item. And that's where we're at tonight. So, I have a motion to approve the resolution. Mr. Derpino?
Yes, I saw move.
Move for approval by Mr. Derpino. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, I have Mr. McPartlin, and we can have some discussion. And we have the applicant, give us an update on the discussions, I guess, you had with, I know that David's been involved in, but the final item. I wanted to just show us what you got.
Sure. So, basically, what you have been seeing all along, the latest and greatest is putting the railing atop of the building. We added the details there. I believe Mr. Derpino has reviewed them. So, we're here tonight for final approvals here for the project. It's been a long, long road, and I, you know, I thank you, and we got to this point. So, as far as the site plan goes, you know, since the last time, you know, we've reduced the amount of impervious surfaces, which I think is in favor for everybody. So, we finally got to a point here where we're all in agreement, and, you know, I'm excited to see this project come to fruition. So, if there's any questions by the board, I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Okay.
So, I'm going to comment on this roof railing, because it doesn't look good. It, it looks like half of a chain link fence, the poles were just put up there. He cited the company on the bottom of the application page. I'm going to reach out to Dan and pick a style and a recommendation to him. It needs more ornamentation. The short post rail is just not going to work. However, I don't, I think it's a minor aesthetic issue. I don't think it should hold up completion of this project moving forward. It can be handled through the Building Department. But at least proportionately, we can see what's been blocked out there. But the correct style just needs to be massaged a little bit.
All right. I'm sure you can, I was going to say, I'm the site engineer. I do want it to look, you know, nice and, you know, in the town. You know, the only thing, I was involved in some of the conversations with Mr. Fusco and Dan Sanders, the architect. And, you know, that, the detail of the railing is very difficult to, to attach on that type of roof structure. So, they have been going back and forth, and, you know, again, I'm not an architect or a structural engineer by means or any of that. I'm just the site civil engineer. And I left it to them, you know, to work with Mr. Derpino. And I'm sure between the three of you, you can come up with the detail you need. But just, you know, from my understanding, it's very difficult to find that, that extra detail that I think that you're looking for, but hopefully, you guys can work it out.
It's pretty easy.
Mr. Derpino, just may I ask, was that a feature that we requested to be added, or was it added later on?
It was in a previous version that we made a recommendation about. I know that the owner, Mr. Fusco, did like it at one point. We had a hand sketch that was being used. And then, it didn't make it into the last couple submissions, and we've been making the recommendation.
So, we even make a recommendation to have one?
We want to have the roof railing in there. We just wanted to, I would personally like to see a better style.
In the roof railing, for, for safety, or is it just decorative?
No, it's decorative.
It's not even covering or shat, or?
No.
Shat, okay. I just couldn't remember the history on that.
This is a flat roof building, so it's got a mansard, which has the large sloping roof plan that you see where the dormers are. But this is essentially a flat roof building.
I mean, you've done a ton of work on this, Mr. Derpino, working with Mr. Fusco on it. I guess the question I ask is, do we have to approve this tonight? I mean, if you still have design elements to this, then are there opportunities to try and fix it? I mean, this is going to fundamentally change the look of the town center. I mean, and I've never liked this, where the location is. I've always been worried about a little bit of the traffic going in and out of the high school, at least for a cup, at least for some of the portions of the day when you have the traffic coming in and out of the high school. And again, I think it's going to fundamentally change look. I think it's improved a lot from where it's been before. But if we have the opportunity to make it even more nice in that area, why not?
And, Mr. Derpino, I had a question about this, the proposed east and west elevations. I was wondering if you noticed that the roof railing does not connect the north and south elevations on the east and west sides?
Yeah, they've just shown it here. They've just shown it there. It doesn't return around.
So, they're, and you're okay with that?
For the most part. I think if, if a better decorative railing was put on the front facade that was a little bit more historically accurate to what he's trying to emulate with the dormers, it would change, would change the appearance.
For me, that wouldn't be a reason to delay the resolution.
No.
Me neither. But I agree with Will's point. It's got to be something, we all agree, that it's either insignificant enough to not be significant, you know, to the public, which, are you thinking that that railing style might actually be lower and smaller in profile?
No, I think the, the height is fine. It's just there's large openings in between each vertical post. And in between, there's, there could be either diagonal decorative pieces that are in there. It could be more spindles that are smaller. There's other options that you can use to infill that.
And this is something we're going to be looking at every day. And you're going to have people who drive through town are going to be looking at it every day.
Until they stop looking at it.
Well, I mean, it's, it is, it is going to affect the, kind of the look of the town center. And that's why I'm kind of like, again, I think it's improved a lot from what it was before, I think in terms of just the adjustments of the look. But I guess that's, and again, I think it kind of, this probably obviously meets all the requirements for the town. It's just, it is a, it is a brand-new look for that area.
And if you want my opinion, I would remove that top railing.
Completely, yeah.
But I, I respect Mr. Derpino and, you know, Architect Dan Sanders. I trust your opinion, and I'm sure it'll look great, but that's only, that's my only opinion.
I was not, I will admit, Luigi, I was not sure what the railing added. But I actually shared with Mr. Derpino, I happened to be on the road, Long Island, a month or two ago, and I swear to you, I saw a building, a brand-new construction, go up, look just like this, and it, I thought it looked great.
With a railing.
Excellent.
Yeah, so...
I can't wait to see it in person.
I mean, the other thing, too, is that the building permit set that actually gets built will have some nuances that aren't exactly shown here. These are, these are renderings.
Yep.
But working drawings, I think, for some of these items could be worked out. I think the porch details are going to have some more robustness to them. He's picked a railing that's thicker, that doesn't, like, he's labeled some of the, the actual elements that are going to go on there with the, with the stone. There's going to be more depth and texture to it than what you're seeing here.
Just out of curiosity, the, the middle railing, what does that bring the height to? Does it change it from?
It doesn't.
Doesn't count. Doesn't even count?
Yeah.
Good. So, it's really just that aesthetic balance? Does it tie in, out of curiosity, other, other area buildings or structures that, that would actually help tie to? Is that part of the intent of the railing, or is it just that?
No, just an aesthetic.
One building?
Get more proportion, you know, get more attention to the center bay, you know.
Which I greatly appreciate the insight you're providing on that, because that's professional experience speaking, and I, I second that. But I, I just don't think it would stop me from approving the project as it, as a planning board either.
What is it going to be? What's the name of the color? What's it going to be made of?
White vinyl, I believe, right?
It's, okay. It's, so it's going to be, it's going to be white, okay.
All right. It's got a profile cap to it. It's got a profile cap, so that's the top rail, the big post here. These posts can have a finial, there's a cap that has to go on top of that. So, you know, there won't be an open, there won't be an open piece of tube.
So, I've put out for the record before that the landscaping buffers to Greens Farm Road are really important for the success of this project. And I completely agree that a better railing is really important for the aesthetics of this project. So, I mean, I didn't put the landscaping in as a condition, even though it was really tempting. But I was going to make sure that, for the record, the planting plan in the detention basin calls for witch hazel, which can be pretty big. And that's a really important part of building the buffer, I think, over to Greens Farm Road. So, I'm going to be watching the plantings and making sure that they're as robust as they show in the bioretention plan. And I want that to be in the record, that those plantings in the bioretention plan are sort of also very important to the buffer over to Greens Farm Road. I feel like we can also put in the record, it's very important that the detail on the, on the roof railing is also refined and addressed at building permit.
Okay. I'm, I'm comfortable with that language being in there.
Yeah, I would agree to that, too. I mean, at this point, you know, the applicant's willing to work, work with, you know, the Building Department and Mr. Derpino. And, you know, if we go by Mr. Oster to keep coming back, I don't think we'll ever see this get built.
Well, the, the other thing, too, is that we've gone through a lot of iterations here. This has been streamlined, so the construction costs, there's been a significant savings with the site work.
Agreed.
With, with the additional entry point going to the second floor, so...
No septic system temporary.
Right, right.
Septic system, so us being a little tough on a roof railing and some plantings, I think.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not against that. I, you know, I just hope the details work out, because sometimes, you know, it gets down to the details, can it really be done or not? And, you know.
Yep.
I think that'll have the final say, is if it really can be built or not, you know.
But I'm also okay putting a condition that, you know, that, that the project lead has a final okay on this.
I like that, too.
Yeah.
I'm very uncomfortable with that.
As a project lead, or just anything that's still outstanding?
Because, I mean, the engineering is, you know, ninety-five percent done, but it's not fully done. If the aesthetics are ninety-five percent done, but we still need that final okay from the project lead, it's strong, but...
Is there a condition that might already cover that, you think?
Uh, no, we don't have a condition like that in there.
I can't recall a time when something has been left to the project lead. If it requires board approval, then it's a full board.
So, we also leave...
If it doesn't, then it shouldn't be in there.
Well, we regularly put conditions that Planning Department or Building Department approval.
Correct.
Yeah, so we could also do that, yeah.
That's different.
Yeah.
You say Planning Department, consultation with the board?
You can just say Planning Department, if you guys trust me.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying, in consultation with the board, doesn't that actually then bring in that sort of review?
Yeah, we have done something similar to that with some of the facades, I think, in Mohawk Commons. The Dollar Tree sign, I think, was also approved. And then, I emailed you guys the final building permit plans. That to you. Just depends on how strong...
I'm going to, I'm going to leave it to David, if you, if you want to make a, a motion to amend the resolution with the condition that the, you know, the Building Department, you know, has, you know, basically a say, similar to like the other conditions where the, you know, the material's going to be approved by the Department of Public Works. So, I'm okay with that, but we'd need a motion for that.
I think the Planning Department should handle it, because this would keep almost an open dialogue for any project, if the project lead has to see it beyond where we sit here. That's where I think the Planning Department and possibly other committees and boards, when they ever become part of the town's structure, can aid in that. So, it's, I would say it's rare that we keep seeing a project come back after we've either approved it or denied it.
Right, that's right. Usually, it just goes through the Building Department.
So, I mean, we could say prior to issuance of a building permit, the Planning Department shall approve the final roof railing detail?
I'm fine with that.
So, we have a motion to modify the resolution, David, to add a condition that the Building Department will review and approve the building rail design, I just heard? Okay, so we have a, a motion, we have a second on that, to add a condition, seconded by Mr. Oster. Okay, let's just do a show of hands, all those in favor of adding the condition regarding approval of the railing, please raise your hand. There you go. Okay, all except for Ms. Gold are in favor of the modifying the resolution to add that condition. So, we now have a modified resolution. Okay. Any other discussion at all, or questions for the applicant? All I can say is, yes, it has been quite a while, but I agree with David. It has, it has improved, you know, especially with the, the grading, the one-point-of-access, less impervious surface, so hard work. They can tell Mr. Fusco, appreciate it. It has improved. So, thank you. Any other comments at all for the applicant? If none, what can we call the roll on the resolution as amended, please?
Mr. Oster?
Aye.
Mr. LaFlemme?
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin?
Aye.
Mr. Derpino?
Aye.
Ms. Shenfield?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Aye. Resolution's approved, and excellent. Close some, close the conditions out, you know, and move forward. Any update, anything going on as far as clearing? You hear anything at all, where we're at?
No.
No?
So, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
All right.
All right. Okay, so, that's it for new business tonight. Under discussion, we did have 1448 Balltown Road, the Ace Hardware Store. As you know, the applicant is not here tonight. We did listen to the public during the public hearing, which is continuing to be open. And I think when the applicant does show next week, those are things that we have kind of talked about a little bit, but times of deliveries, the amount of deliveries, you know, access points, you know, we're still waiting on the elevations that show the signage in color. We've gotten what signs are going to be included, but we still haven't gotten the elevations that we've asked for. So, so, you know, so we still have some, some work to do. And hopefully, with that information will be submitted to the Building, Plan, Building, Planning Department before the next meeting, and the applicant will be here, so we can, you know, have our public hearing. That would be September ninth, seven o'clock.
You think this time they'll show up?
I hope so.
And if they don't?
Well, we're trying, you know, it's, you know, we're trying to work with them, you know.
Just to note, that also...
They should be working with us.
Yeah.
Point of order.
Yeah.
There will also be a public hearing held by the town board on the same special use permit.
Correct. Thank you. Kevin, I had a comment, actually, for Laura, but on the description we got, where it reads the background information. Just want to clarify, at the end of that first paragraph, it says, it talks about installation of canopies along the building's western, eastern facades. Is that also where the sign, I believe the signs are going to be located on the western facade? Yeah, it's the, it's the western and southern.
Okay, thank you.
Western, southern. All right.
I think just western, are they?
Well, there may be southern on the drive access, yeah.
Maybe, yes, possibly.
But not the eastern. It's going to be Balltown. Balltown or the access drive. And/or. Yeah.
For the extra signs, but you're probably still going to have a store sign facing the parking lot, where people actually park their cars. Yeah.
I would expect that.
Yeah.
But that's what we're waiting for. You know, they gave us the proposal, but we asked for elevation, so we could kind of see how the color jives. The description is speaking to the southern and the eastern. It should really be western as well. Correct.
And Laura, could you clarify? I know there has been some concern about the prior locations or prior businesses being at that location had some water issues, and as I recall, the architect had noted that they determined that there was a pump issue that is a simple replacement?
That's what he said because I brought up the drainage issues, because we've also had complaints about the drainage at the building department, and he did not feel that the grading of the parking lot needed to be redone. He thought that was a maintenance issue with the building that could easily be fixed. Yeah.
Is there like a, any kind of ongoing like traffic review of this at this point?
Well, we have a.
Yeah, they gave us some, some numbers.
Yeah, the traffic summary's in here.
The peak is 11 to 1, it's midday, not rush hour.
I.
If I interpreted it right.
Uh, no, I mean, their traffic counts go from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Right, but the, the peak of the traffic is 11.
Yeah, around lunchtime.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
Lunchtime versus the rush hour.
Right, that's what their.
Running out to get that.
Right, but this is.
Go home to work on your house.
This is their, this is their.
Their estimated.
This is their estimate, I'm talking about our own town.
Oh, like a TDE, look at it?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
Well, once we move forward, we have a town designate engineer or is the review this internally?
Uh, well, because it's a, just a tenant change and there's not any like stormwater detention ponds that are being built or anything, like we usually handle tenant changes internally, but if we feel like we want a hard look at the traffic study, we can always bring on a TDE for nominal amount, or I can bring it over to the engineering department if they're comfortable.
Well, the other thing is when the applicant comes in next time, we can ask them, you know, what's their source? Was this from the, you know, the Highway Engineering Handbook? Is it, you know, from experience from other stores? We can get some more information and then we can make that decision whether we need a TDE to validate the traffic.
I, I guess I'm just somewhat confused and maybe someone can explain why they're gonna have less at like, you know, kind of after, quote unquote, after-work time periods? I mean, is it just because they expect a lot of construction people come, like people who are working during the day going there are more likely to be using it midday as opposed to people stopping in after work?
Mr. Oster, that, we, I remember we asked the applicant to give some insight of their truck, their, their experience with their stores, especially the one there on the interior of a community. Their goal was to have an easy, convenient place for folks to go on the interior that's not a box store. And, and therefore, I think that's what their response was. Based on other stories like that, their busy times during the day when we gotta run out for a few things we missed, as opposed to a big shopping excursion after work or when we're picking up kids and living our busy lives. So I remember asking that question, I think that's where it came from, but that's my recollection, though they're gonna ask.
All right, and since they own two other stores, I mean.
They had some experience.
They have some data from their other locations.
Um, do we get an input from the police on possible access from Balltown on this?
Uh, we always refer site plan to them, they didn't write anything back specifically, but I can ask that question.
And I know Jeff was going to try and find if DOT had an opinion or not, and I don't know if he got to resolve that issue.
Okay, I mean, they're also, DOT is also one of the ones that we coordinate with, but.
State DOT?
Yeah, but, and so a lot of times they just stay silent.
Okay, in the past, they have not on that particular issue, so.
Oh, okay.
But it's been a lot of years, so maybe their thinking has changed. I know they did oppose it at one point.
So oppose additional traffic on a private access way to Balltown?
Have additional, yeah, going directly from Balltown. They preferred it to come in the other way.
I'm not sure either.
Yeah.
And I, and I guess as a practical matter, too, I recognize that it was once a gym, are the, are the trip visits based upon whatever book that you use, are those less, more?
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Look at that.
I mean, in terms, and then, you know, if that's similar, like were there accident issues and, I mean, I know it, it's somewhat hard to compare because I think the traffic has probably gotten even more intense over the last, you know, 10 years or so, whatever, 20, whatever, whatever the time period is, but just by way of comparison against what it once, what it once was, I have to imagine a gym was probably more intense than a mortgage, than an investment broker. I know that's the comments I've heard people say when we've talked, whenever they've read about it, that we've talked about it, and they're just about the traffic issues that could be coming out on Balltown Road.
Any other questions or comments on that? I mean, so it's tough, obviously, we've got questions without the applicant here, but we'll.
Well, I'll pass them all on.
Pass them on and.
Hopefully they'll have answers for us.
But I think some of these are ones that are independent of, I mean, they're gonna say, nah, it's not a big traffic issue at all.
No, I know.
In other words, validate their numbers, but we need to understand where their numbers are coming from.
Be DOT in our engineering department, yep.
Need to understand, you know, what their source was, whether, like I said, it was from the other stores, experience, handbook, we'll get that information from them.
Laura, I was driving by and it kind of dawned on me, this building and the buildings adjacent to it all seem to have a similar setback, which far exceeds the requirement, zoning requirement, but they all appear to be sort of in line, and I was wondering, do you know if that was at a time a larger setback or the reason behind the sighting of those?
I don't know that, yeah. I don't think that the, that the setbacks have ever been bigger. I don't think there was a major change in zoning setbacks for the neighborhood commercial town center overlay, but I don't know why they were built like that.
Yeah, so due to the topography being up on kind of top of the knoll there, too, you know?
I can look into it.
I, I, I just anticipate that maybe that could come up and.
Because of the addition for the greenhouse in front of it?
Yeah, I know, we have already some discussion about how that creates a more pedestrian-friendly facility, so there's certainly benefits of that.
Of adding that front entrance?
Right.
Yeah. But if you're concerned about, are you concerned about the average setback for the?
More, more just, I guess, a justification for the addition.
Of the greenhouse?
I know, yeah. I know it was.
Yeah, we did bring this to the Complete Streets Committee and they, they'll give you a memo, it was Friday morning, so it was after I really prepared everything, but their two things were that they really wanted to support the entrance to Balltown Road for pedestrians, and I think they wanted to see the line of trees continued, which is more of a tree council recommendation, but I'll double check and then make sure you guys get their recommendation.
So I think.
Trees actually is still within the Complete Streets Committee purview because trees are actually a traffic calming and mitigation measure, and so they do actually look at streetscape as part of Complete Streets, just for the record, it's not all tree council.
Okay, any other questions on 1448? Comments?
Is this a, my other question is, when it comes to the parking and access to this site and the other affiliated sites, my understanding that they're all under common ownership. Is this our opportunity if there are issues, known issues with traffic flow or general maintenance and upkeep of the parking lots, is this our opportunity to address those issues?
Most certainly not under common ownership.
My understanding that they are.
Yeah.
Land is all under common ownership?
Definitely not.
No?
Is it the parking lot referring to or the access road?
This, this piece of lands, the land immediately.
Like the?
To the south.
The legal building and the, um, kinder care?
Kinder care.
Yeah, and then, and then I think they all share, well, they don't all share an access easement, we know that, but.
Well, I'll double check, I don't think that's true, though.
No?
But I, I don't know.
How do they come to share the parking?
Um, my understanding of the situation is that the town has actually always asked for the parkings in the back to be interconnected to, for, you know, traffic things, but I think that that access road is actually half-owned by the legal building and half-owned by kinder care.
Yeah.
And I don't think they're the same owner. But, I mean, I'd have to double check.
The, I have pretty good information that the legal building is rented by the prop, to, it's leased, it's a lease.
Oh.
So.
By the same people that own the kinder care?
I think so.
Is the same people that own the Morgan Stanley Building?
I, I can ask around, but.
Well, yeah, I can research it, too. I did, I mean, I feel like I haven't seen the three names be the same, but that doesn't mean they're not. I'm not sure, I don't think he actually has adjacent names on here. No, he doesn't.
The legislature's office would have the ownership information, I believe.
Oh, yeah, I can look that up, I haven't checked that, but.
That would be news to me if it's true.
Yeah. But. I mean, one of the reasons that we have tenant change is if there's kind of a larger-scale issue that we want to see addressed, it is the time to bring it up. So if there's issues with the cross-connections on the parking lots that you guys have noticed when you're driving around or you wanna discuss, yeah, I definitely think we should bring them up.
And I don't have specific issues because I don't travel through there often, but I think just the general concern of safety and if we've got now semi, semis making deliveries.
I know what the other, the Complete Streets wanted to see a painted crosswalk between the sidewalk in front of Lake CBS and, you know, this island. Not crossing Balltown Road, crossing that private access, they just wanted to see a painted crosswalk, because it should be there already, but it's not.
Where the, the driveway is across the driveway?
Yeah, like from the sidewalk across the driveway to the next sidewalk, they wanted to see a.
Well, I mean, that also, I mean, I, I don't know if that's something to think about as well, too, like if you're gonna have a retail business there that's gonna generate a lot of people, whether you might need to have a crosswalk from the condos across the street to that.
DOT, I think, a mid-block crosswalk on Balltown Road.
The corner, it's not that far.
Yeah, yeah. They're, generally speaking, mid-block crosswalks are a difficult sell anyway, but on a state highway with that amount of traffic, I think it would be just.
Would you mind encouraging?
Yeah, that would be really difficult.
Okay. Hey, Laura, we'll move to reports. Anything else? Tell us, share with us.
Oh, Alexis has something.
Hi, I just wanted to share with you guys two things. First, I want to share with you that on Friday, Ken Hassett, the code enforcement officer, we just started our first abandonment proceeding pursuant to the Rural Property Actions and Proceedings Law. It's something that we haven't taken advantage of, but it allows the municipality to take ownership of abandoned residential properties based on certain enumerated factors. So with respect, we certified as abandoned 1019 Van Antwerp Road, which I know has been kind of an eyesore. It's right, we get close to Union Street, so we're gonna have to follow through certain procedural requirements, make sure that no one next of kin to the deceased owner claims ownership rights to that property, but if we, you know, if no one comes forward in the next seven days, we'll commence a proceeding, which will allow us to get the title to the property, and then we can move on from there, whether or not we'll transfer it to a land bank or whatnot, but thought I wanted to bring that to your attention. Hopefully, this is the first of many instances where we can, you know, reclaim zombie houses. Second, I wanted to just say that there's been a renewed focus in the building department on enforcing the property, the property maintenance chapter of the code. The reason I wanted to bring this to your attention is because if we were to issue a notice of violation saying you have five days to clean up junk on your property or to remove a junk vehicle, the person who is alleged to have caused the violation has the right to request a hearing before a member, a three-member panel. The three-member panel is the code enforcement officer, a member of the planning board, and a member of the zoning board of appeals. So I don't think that this has come up before, but since this language that we're including all the notice of violations, I thought it was, should bring it to your attention. So far, we've issued a few notice of violations for relating to cleanup of junk and litter on residential properties, and although it's only been a short trial period, it's been, the response has been good.
Excellent.
So we might need one of you guys if we need a hearing, though. I'd probably just email you and see who's willing.
Yeah, I'd be glad to volunteer because I'm available during the day.
Extra free time?
I'm available during the day.
Great, no, that's, that's good news, thank you. Ms. Kim, appreciate it. Anything else, Laura, you have?
Nope.
No? All right, nothing else, I think we'll go, move to commission business, you have any questions for Laura, I guess you can cover them, then, Mr. Oster, you have anything?
Yeah, just to ask a question about any lessons learned from the, the hearing on the Knott Street, on the Knott Street Center, like, you know, because I know I've heard from some of the Knott Street merchants, I know they, they were very vocal as well during the hearing about, you know, they raised concerns, but the town, the town has no say over what, what, what will take place. I found that hard to believe that as, I mean, maybe technically speaking, but as a practical matter, I thought we would have more involvement in it, so any lessons you learned from it?
Well, so ultimately, the county legislature is the one that takes action on what, you know, the proposal is to move forward, but the Complete Streets did review the proposals and offer the perspective to the town, and hopefully the town board will also take a look at the recommendations from Complete Streets. You know, the last time there was a county project that was in the town that, you know, involved a lot of community concern, the town board did reach out and, because they were very post, the Complete Streets Committee, myself, I think some, not everyone was in agreement, I think not even all this board was in agreement, but the question on whether or not we should have a traffic light on the corner of Rosendale Road and River versus a traffic circle, and I think that, you know, because there's a CMAC grant and there's some issues with traffic lights, that the town did push for the traffic circle, so, I mean, it's not outside the realm of the possibility, but the ultimate decision-maker is the county legislature, which obviously are gonna listen to the town and they're gonna listen to the residents, and they're gonna look at what the engineering's are and the fiscal constraints of the project and what they really have to do, because it's actually a very constrained grant, it's a, it's a highway safety improvement program grant, and so you have to have a certain number of accidents to even qualify for the grant, and there has to be certain prescriptions for safety involved in that grant, or you don't get the money. So it's a very, it's a strict grant, you know, it's a county legislature decision ultimately, but I do think that they would listen to the town if the town wanted to endorse an option. Complete Streets basically said they like, the, they would wanna maximize the sidewalks in front of the businesses because we really do feel like as a town center overlay district, if you have a wider sidewalk there, it'd be a benefit to the business, but they're also, you know, sensitive to the fact that the parking for those businesses, pull-up parking is important, so I think they basically said they would be okay with three or four or some kind of combination of both, which maximizes the sidewalks.
Three or four? Option two or four?
Yeah, three or four, yeah.
So, no to the parallel parking?
Um, no, they're okay with the parallel parking, but, yeah, actually, as a complete, yeah, but the merchants are not, so the, the kind of balance was probably three or four would work, but their thing that they would wanna explore if, you know, you went forward with three, would be to see if you can get an even bigger sidewalk than eight feet, because eight feet, you still are gonna have a hard time bringing out tables and bringing life to the street there, so, like, they, you know, push the street even, you know, even as far south as it can possibly go to maximize those sidewalks for the vendors.
Or eliminate that island.
Well, three does have the island eliminated, so two is the one with the island, but two also only has five-foot sidewalks in front of the businesses, which, you know, for Complete Streets, yeah, as far as Complete Streets go, if, you know, a five-foot sidewalk maybe meets ADA requirements, but it's not gonna be super pedestrian-friendly, I mean, the, the, sort of, the Complete Streets mission is to have, yes, look at cars, but also have pedestrians and bicycles and transit and these multimodal things taken equally. So cars are important, but not any more important than people, so if you have a five-foot sidewalk and you're maximizing the way that cars work, that's not really Complete Streets. So they're looking at those elements and trying to figure out what makes the most sense for a balance of the multimodal and really promoting the pedestrian and bicycle amenities there so that it's not overtaken by cars.
I can't recall some of the options. The street, the linear direction of, of Knott Street doesn't change, right? That, that northern lane position remains in that spot, correct?
Um, it, it, no. In a couple of the, um, in a couple of the alternatives, they shift that entire street south a little bit.
Just a little bit.
Mm-hmm. Because that's also traffic calming to add in a little, a little.
Curvature.
Yeah, a little curvature, a little tiny half chicane, yeah. Is also traffic calming.
Then you lose a little bit of parking across the street as well.
Yeah, and those, some, some of those things are details that get worked out as the, as, you know, I mean, you're still looking at, like 25%. I mean, it's not even, these are really just conceptual, so when you get into those details, they get worked out once. You can't do that engineering on four alternatives. You pick the concept that works and then you put all of the design into it and figure out where you can squeeze in extra parking. They also recommended that the town, you know, really do something with the intersection of Clifton Park and Crescent. And there's a possibility for adding parking over there, which would probably be quite helpful. So like right now, it's kind of a sea of asphalt with no real, like, distinct machine ways of those roads to come together. If you put in an island and you kind of neck down where those roads come together, you can probably set a couple parking spaces over there as well, so. And maybe a street tree, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Oster?
Yeah.
Mr. Derpino?
No.
McPartland?
No.
Ms. Gold?
Anything further on Skating International? There'd been a discussion about maybe contacting them to see if they had feedback on the rotary?
Uh, I have, I did not get that direction and I, I don't have anything